Yeah, now's the time that you guys can sneak away.
Yeah.
Sneak is good, sneak is good.
Did you see America too?
For sure.
Alright.
Alright, next up, we have information proposals or comments from the audience. I believe we do have one person that has requested to address the board. Ms. Stagner? We need to get you the microphone down.
No, I'll stand up.
Okay. I'm just gonna let you know that I think you've been informed, you'll be allowed three minutes to address the board. And it's not customary for the board to be prepared for a response, but we do welcome you coming out to address us and appreciate it.
Okay, sorry, I'm a little nervous, okay.
I may put that microphone really low too, maybe yours, I'm sorry. I cheated ya.
First off, thank you for letting me speak tonight. And I'm here to bring to everyone's attention that there are some safety issues with the lack of cameras on the outside of our buses. I read last year the school board wants to put wifi on the buses. I was shocked because I repeatedly called the superintendent's office requesting cameras to be put on the outside of the buses. Last, or wifi is a privilege. This year, my youngest daughter, she's seven years old, was trying to get on the bus when I car ran the bus stop sign, jumped a curb, went sixty to seventy miles an hour down my street, and jumped another curb. I tried to get a picture and did not get the plates. My neighbor gave me a video, which I will share to you guys if need, of a video of the car. And we still cannot get the plates, so it was never followed through. I have been having this issue for years. This last incident was the worst. We have to get cameras on these buses on the outsides to get plates from these cars that are running and almost hitting the buses with our children. And our drivers' safeties matter. We need cameras. Thank you for letting me talk.
We appreciate you coming out and expressing your concerns. And I'll speak for everyone in the room that safety is utmost priority for us, but we do appreciate you sharing your concerns.
If you guys need to eat the picture, I can email it to you guys as well.
Okay.
The video, so you could see how bad it is.
Alright.
Good?
Good? Okay, next up, Board President's Report. This month, I don't have anything to report on, so I'll let Dr. Glass take over with his report.
Outstanding. Had a big weekend in sports. We've got boys soccer team remain undefeated, blowout win over Anna Jonesboro. Congratulations to them, they've got a big game tomorrow night, Eureka. You know their record by any chance, Eureka's?
No, they're good.
They're good?
They're good.
They're good, folks. We need all of your support. We'd love to see everybody out there in attendance build a stands and root our Tigers home. Girls tennis, we had two players finish first and second in the CMO Conference Bracket. Our cross-country teams had a big day. Lots of PRs this past Saturday. Football didn't go the way we wanted Friday night, but we did see some bright spots and some good moments. And so, we wish them well this upcoming week. They are making progress every week and they're doing very well. Also, Friday was awesome tailgating event on the north end of the stadium. We had a big crowd there participating. Thank you for coming to support our students. It's been a lot of fun, our kids and families, we've had a good feedback that they loved it. I hope you've got a chance to see some of the great coverage with our district-wide athletic program in the newspaper and on television. And Coach Moore is gonna talk a little bit more about that later, but our students at Franklin are learning golf. These are sports and activities that they may not have a chance to experience otherwise, so we're glad to introduce those into our elementary schools. I'm sure you have heard about this, but I have to say here in my report as well, Ibram Ahmad, a senior at CHS, is the national merit semifinalist. We're so proud of him, would like to congratulate him on such a big honor. I've met with some of the students at the CTC to start brainstorming for this new year's snow day video. They've come up with some fantastic ideas, so it ought to be something. So stay tuned for what they come up with. And last but not least, the governor, and I sent you an email this week that the governor is supposed to be here next Tuesday. He has postponed that, something else came up, so he still intends to visit, but I'll have to send you a future date on that. Alright, that's all I got for my report.
Cool, thank you very much. Next up, program evaluations. Is that with Dr. Benya?
I have one program evaluation, which is summer school program. This just gives you a little bit of information in regards to our summer school program that we had in 2022. If you look at our 22 enrollment, our pre-K had 380 students, CMS had 97, CJS had 110, and CHS had 363. And CA had 43 students. You can see the cost of the program was $302,361.38. That's up from last year cost-wise, but we did some additional programming that we did with the CTC. So we hired teachers to actually have an enrichment program for our junior high students. So that increased some of the cost and there was some other additional costs as well. And I think the 2021 numbers were some of that federal money that we received to help pay for them. Just an evaluation of program, we have a pre and a post-test when students are working in ELA and reading. And so you can see the improvements. Elementary had a 90.8% improvement in reading, a 91% improvement in math. CJS had 80% in reading, 90% in math, and 97% in science. CMS had 100% improvement in reading and 100% improvement in math in their assessments that they gave. And then CHS, this is a great number, because it helps with our graduation rate. 204.5 credits were earned. That's pretty amazing, which is great. And then CA had 23.5 credits earned, which is wonderful. And they're starting to serve more kids as well, so that we can get that credit recovery over the summer. You can see some of the strengths of the program, academic opportunities for low-achieving students. We had our meal program, transportation, additional time to complete credits, which was a great benefit to our kids. We had, I told you a little bit about the enrichment program that we did with the CTC, that went over really well. I'm hoping next summer that that will actually expand as well. We had four different areas and they're gonna hopefully expand that for next year as well, because it was well-received. Just some concerns regarding the program, ensuring attendance. You know, we get kids started the first two weeks, especially in elementary, and then it kind of starts falling off in elementary attendance-wise. Getting the kids to complete the entire program is sometimes a challenge. They get interested in summer, so. Emphasis on graduation rate. We just need to continue to just work on doing credit recovery during summer school. And then just research, need to determine innovative programming that will affect students academically and socially emotionally. And that's all I have, I regulate it as an average outcome. It's a good summer school.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions?
With the credit recovery, I mean, that's a significant number of credits from high school. Do we have an idea of how many students were off-track of graduating and by?
I don't have that data in front of me, no.
Is that something that we have available to us, as far as a four-year or five-year graduation?
Whether they're on track or they're four-year, you just have to look at the cohort to see if it puts them back on track for graduation. We can do that.
Is there a way, I mean, the numbers are staggeringly successful in terms of percentage of improvement. And again, presumably, most of, some of the kids who are doing summer school are having low scores at the end, so potentially easier to improve on a lower score and kind of get the percent on improvement. But I don't even know, do we send, do kids have computers over the summer? Or they turn them in before summer break? That aren't in summer school? Like, they turn them in? Is there a mechanism or any desire to, like, given the success of this, and again, this is in-person and there's clearly values that. Is there, is there any value in having opportunities for kids who would be interested in having some sort of thing using Canvas? I mean, some of the tools we have right now to put programming in front of kids, even for just an hour a day. I mean, for those who want to do it, I mean, I don't know if you've ever thought about that kind of thing?
Some of the kids have an opportunity to complete possibly an edgenuity course that they started and they never completed it. Then they can actually continue to work on that over the summer as well. We did that because of all the learning loss that happened when we were all virtual for COVID. And that could be an opportunity for secondary to continue to do that. I think they do some of that credit recovery or concept, they call it concept recovery at Central Academy. And you can do that with edgenuity, you can do concept recovery.
But I like where you're going with it, Paul, because this is not just credit recovery, this is for enrichment. You want to work ahead, so to speak, I think that's something to explore.
And some kids may have challenges with connectivity or other things that might make that harder. But if we've already got the one-to-one, and again, there's probably some challenges with that too, that when you give a kid a computer for the summer, maybe there's problems there too. But things to think about. But I just wondered, there's so much content out there, especially with Canvas now, what we have available for kids who are getting ready to, that want to go, get ready for algebra, get ready for geometry, or whatever that looks like. I would just think we've got to be able to be able to do that. And it'd be interesting to see if that would change anything in terms of people's preparation, even on students who are excelling.
We have that through, we have that through our edgenuity program. So we can offer advanced placement courses, you can do ACT prep courses. There's a variety of things on, I'm talking secondary, but there's other thing, enrichment things for six through 12. The programming that we have right now.
Well, that'd be great, I mean, you think about how important standardized testing is, and so for kids, and we're kind of going through that. But like, when you think about kids who have some focused way to say, hey, this course is gonna be important depending what you want to go do next. We have courses already in place that are paid for presumably, that you could go use this content or?
And we could also do that with Imagine Learning in the elementary. So there's a couple of different ways that we could actually provide that enrichment activities even through Imagine Learning over the summer and letting students. But most of our elementary students, they don't take their devices home anyway, they actually use them in the classroom. But if we had kids that wanted some additional support, or if they have a device at home, they can log into their Imagine Learning program and actually continue to work on content.
I just think it'd be interesting to explore, and again, there's probably some definite cons to it too. But to look at this and let parents know if we had options that were available and said, here's some things. Recognizing that right now, a lot of kids, I think in the summer, spend their time in front of advice, but it's not one of these, it's one of these, or it's something else, right? And if you, and ultimately you wanted, said they're entertained by it, and that's fine, but it could be, well, not people would take advantage of it, I think some parents would and be excited to see what's out there. And even if it was just a small amount, I think we'd probably see some incremental benefit, just put thinking about maybe.
One of the things I'm particularly proud about this summer school is the CTC. We offered that down to the junior high. And that's a discussion that I've had with some of the chamber board of directors. They're wanting to know what we're doing for workforce development and how we're plugging in as a school system and what they can do to help us. And really, it's getting kids exposed to what the CTC has to offer and what, really what the community has to offer, but the CTC especially, and what they have at their fingertips. Because that's a gem right across the parking lot from the high school. And I think it's one that we underutilize and we don't fill up like we should, just because I think the kids aren't aware of it. We take tours, yes, and we do things, but they don't really get the hands-on experience like they did over the summer. So I'm hoping to see that grow and really capitalize on that first year. So we're willing to do more of that. And speaking of that, in October, First Friday Coffee in October, there'll be an educational forum. Me, Scott Smith, Jackson Superintendent, and Mr. Garner with the Notre Dame will all be doing kind of an educational roundtable, talking about workforce development and what the school systems are doing for the community and surrounding areas. So that'll be something kind of cool to see.
Do we have enough one-to-one devices if they wanted to check one out for the summer that they could?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, no doubt.
Initially, initially, we didn't have enough and they had to bring it back in so they could upgrade them or?
We pushed the middle school, we just pushed our middle school devices that were still working in good order. We've pushed them down into the elementary, so all the elementary classrooms has a set of devices as well. Really, it's K-12.
So if someone wanted to check one out over the summer or before March or something, they could?
The tech department does clean them.
I mean, they have to re-agree format and everything, so I don't know if we could, they could keep them full summer? But they would maybe turn them in in July, you know, get them, return them in July so they have time to reform those devices. It's, I don't think it'd be an issue of turning them in. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, move along to academic service report.
That's back to me. I just wanted to kind of update you guys, everyone, on our CSIP. Thank you for getting your committee members to me. All of them have been communicated to, and we've also sent emails for them to sign up for just the committee input, the interviews. So we're excited about that. We invited over 1,200 stakeholders, and we're doing that within three days. So it's a monumental task that EGL is doing, and they're working very hard on making sure it's all organized so that we're ready to go on Monday, October 3rd. So it'll be October 3rd through the 5th. I'm just trying to think if there's anything else I need to let you guys know. Once we are finished with the interview process, we will send out surveys to students and to families, our district families as well. So we're gonna be getting additional data from all of our families and our students as well. So then, once we get all of that, then we'll start working on the five-year plan, which is, you guys know, CSIP is the Continuous School Improvement Plan. We're redoing that for our next five years. So, so, once we get all that data, we'll be able to continue to move forward on developing that plan. But that's really where we're at at this point. It's exciting, because it's gonna, it's gonna give us a lot of great information from a lot of different stakeholders, so.
Lots of different points of views. Sure. Alright, thank you. Next up, we have the CTA report.
Okay, hear me? Long time since I've been up here, I'm out of practice. I can talk in front of kids all day, but I get in front of you guys and I'm like, melt. So I made notes this time. We've had a great start to the year. Kickoff was great, had a great time. Our first member meeting went really well for our CTA. We had Dr. Benya and Dr. Glass and Mr. Beck came, and they did a great job communicating to staff about their views and what they're ready to do for us. And it was very well-received and helped us start the year on a super positive note. So we really appreciate you guys taking your time to do that. Right now, we're finishing up our membership drive. Our treasurer, Amy Mays, and membership coordinator, Shannon Ritter, have been working hard to get everyone signed up and crunch all our numbers. As of Friday, we currently have 254 MSTAs members and 216 CTA members. So the MSTAs is the statewide teacher association, and the CTA is our community teacher association, just for the district. So our numbers are looking really good this year. Coming up, November 16th through 18th, we have our MSTAs state convention. And right now, we have 13 staff members attending, which is awesome. We're allotted 11 delegates based on our membership numbers. And we also have Ms. Haley Russell, who is the MSTAs state past president, and Mr. Tyler Lappi, who left me, he usually sits next to me. But he is the MSTAs state board of director representing the southeast region. And so we're just super excited that we have a large showing to represent our district, because that guides a lot of the state education legislation. So it's really important that our district is represented at those things. And we appreciate you guys supporting us in that, because honestly, many districts are not near as lucky as us. And I don't want to talk too much, because it might get taken away, but our district very much supports us going to these things, so we really appreciate that. This year, in January, MSTAs has decided to have a state Capitol Day. We typically have a regional Capitol visit that's separated by region, but they feel that the way that legislation is going right now, they need a big showing of educators. So on January 31st, all of the MSTAs Association, which is about 43,000 members, whoever wants to attend, will be at Jefferson City on that day. Just to kind of visit and talk to legislators and things like that. So we hope to have another large showing from our district for that also. Then we have our staff shout-outs, my favorite part. At Elmer Schrader, our shout-out is to Heather Randall, who has been a tremendous help in so many ways. She's encouraging, supportive, and has been such a wonderful new addition to the Elmer Schrader family. And a shout-out to Jessica O'Gwin, Elizabeth Stur, and Ashley Lloyd for being the best third grade team ever and for helping make my transition to third grade so easy and smooth. At Blanchard, huge shout-out to our new staff members who are embracing their new jobs, making connections with students, and showing up with smiles on their faces daily. At our central office, shout-out to the district registrar, Ms. Tina Wright, for working so hard to get new students enrolled as quickly as possible. At Clifford, shout-out to our SPED team, they continuously go above and beyond and do what is needed to help support our students at Clifford, including Ms. Courtney and Ms. Callie, that we call honorary Clifford staff. And a shout-out to Ms. Katie Minson, who has been a great addition to our staff. She has developed positive relationships with students by helping them have success throughout the day. At the Early Childhood Center, shout-out to Ms. Shelby Caldwell, who is one of our devoted teacher assistants, and unfortunately, she will be leaving us this week. She will be sorely missed. Best wishes, Ms. Shelby. Shout-out to all of the teacher assistants at the ECC, they are the heart of our team, we couldn't do it without them. And at the high school, shout-out to Dubois, Kirchner, and Students in It for the Best Theme Spirit Week Ever. I have not seen that many students and teachers participate in a while, probably since 2007. Their ability to hype up our school for the Kate Jackson rivalry game was phenomenal. And at Jefferson, shout-out to our new fourth grade teachers, Mr. Miller and Mrs. Windings. They have both jumped in and started off the school year extremely successfully. And shout-out to our SPED teachers and TAs, they hit the ground running from the moment they enter the doors. They work extremely hard and face challenges with such strength and positivity. And at the junior high, shout-out to our new staff, they are a wonderful addition and great team players. They are fully engaged, making connections, and working hard. It is great to have them on our staff. And the middle school, shout-out to all of our staff, it has been such a positive start to the school year. We are finding joy in each crazy day. So I love that the themes are a lot of positive, a lot of joy, good start to the day. And there's also a recurring theme of our wonderful new behavior interventionists that we're very, very excited to have in our buildings. And there's also a recurring theme of our wonderful new behavior interventionists that we're very, very excited to have about in our buildings. And I'm hearing from a lot of people that it's really taking a lot off our plate, so thank you for adding that to our plate. It's very much needed. We love you. Thank you, guys. Oh, any questions?
Great news. Thank you. Yep. All right, next up, we have the treasury finance report.
This month, I will be reporting on the month ending August 31st. General fund started with an beginning fund balance of a little over 15 million. Revenues received were 921,000, expenses of 2.1 million. 988,000 was transferred to the special revenue fund, leaving us with the ending fund balance of 13.3 million. The cash and investment details are listed. Does anyone have any questions?
Just FYI, too, the auditor has started?
The audit started last week, so it's been here.
The timeline?
We are bringing it to the November Board meeting this year, so that will be good.
Good. Any questions? All right, thank you. Next up, support service report.
Good evening. The first thing you have in front of you is our federal reimbursement comparison for food service. You can see where we're at. It's only the month of August that we have in front of you, since we're still currently in September. But we will continue to do this throughout the school year, so you can kind of see how years, months play out. We did renew our participation in CEP, so obviously our, our students are receiving the breakfast and lunch at no cost to the parents. And you'll also find that our reimbursement rate will be a little bit different this year, because a lot of our programs that were offered to us the last two years from the federal government due to COVID have completely changed. And so we're returning back to funding that we saw pre-COVID, which goes back to the 1819 year. We are still dealing a little bit with resources and sourcing out our food products. Weekly, we'll put in the orders, and at times, sometimes our core orders are not delivered. So we try to get those changes ahead of the families as soon as possible. So we have, you know, we have an item listed, but we see if the order doesn't come in, we can quickly get that out to the families. So if somebody wants to do something different on those days, those kids can do that. They want to bring their lunch or something along those lines. So we haven't seen any let-up, and we have not received any word from the state or federal level of any new initiatives that would be re-implemented that we had been operating on in the past, so we'll see how that goes. This year, our nutrition department is up for a DESI and USDA review. We will undertake an admin review here in approximately the next couple of months. And then in the month of October, we're going through a procurement review, so it's basically, we just file our paperwork with them, making sure what we're doing is done by what their standards are that they give us to operate in, and then if we have any findings, then they report that back to us, and then we take corrective action. The admin review deals more with, are we serving the right amount in, in quantity of food? Is there the, the food groups that the kids are needing to get at each meal? Are those represented? For elementary, is the portion size correct? For secondary, is, you know, is it a larger portion? And then the procurement, that's obviously how we purchase foods. It's going to be interesting to see how that comes out, because the last couple of years through waivers, basically, it was find food where you can find it and feed the kids how you can feed them. So it'll be interesting to see how, how that comes back. Buildings and grounds, we continue to finish up a lot of outside projects. Just today, at Elmer Schrader, their new message board was being installed. At Franklin, we have two patio awnings that were installed on their playgrounds, one at the front playground, one at the second. So we're, we're trying to get all of our outside projects done before weather gets in. And it seems it's getting a little bit cooler, a little bit quicker. Do not pay attention to the Farmer's Almanac, because it's calling for a brutal winter, so we'll, we'll hopefully miss that. Other than that, I'll wait till a little bit later, because you do have a motion in front of you for Jefferson. Does he have questions, concerns, or comments? That's all I have for now.
Some quick question, Josh, on the food, on the reimbursement costs. Like you said, things are probably going to revert back to the 1819 numbers, which when you look at this, the difference is about 900 grand between what we got in 1819, at 2.2 million dollars.
So look at the days in, back in 2018, 19, that was 12 days of reimbursement. This year, it was only six days. During that time, where the change came from is due to state statutes, the start date of the school year shifted back. So we do not offer as many days in the month of August.
Well, yeah, forget August. Like the full year, though, I guess, like, it looks like after-school is obviously tremendously, the number of kids getting fed after-school is exponentially higher than it was in that comparative period. I guess I'm just wondering from a cost basis standpoint, do you think, based on, you know, the total reimbursement for last year, just as an example, which presumably would be the closest to this year in terms of the number of students being fed, was about $3.1 million, which is 40% higher than the 2.2 in the base year? Do you think, again, there's a huge difference in the after-school kids in here, but it looks like that's a relatively small number in terms of spend, say, the cost per kid's low there? Do you envision, based on kind of pricing right now and the inflationary environment, that we'll be able to come close to breaking even? Or is this going to be something where there's a, where there's a giant deficit, so to say, just feeding kids?
Great question, good insight. So we do see ourselves probably more breaking even, where we have, the last couple of years, because of what the reimbursement rates have been with the USDA and DESI, we, using the term profiting is not accurate, however, that has allowed us, when we've had those higher fund dollars come in, we've been able to reinvest back into our program. And so, and when I say reinvest, new tables and chairs, or new kitchen equipment, or other different types of items that we would need to purchase, because we are not allowed to run an excess balance through our nutrition program in excess of what three months of expenditures would be. So we have to spin that back down. So we are probably, we are going to see ourselves having that less of an excess balance and not being able to reinvest. But we've been fortunate, where we've been able to catch up a lot of different projects for what we've had the last couple of years, that we, we are sitting pretty good. And also the, the bond issues that we've had recently, we're able to update the Elmer Schrader kitchen, where we, you know, totally went that. The Franklin kitchen is less than, you know, 11, 12 years old. Jefferson's getting a whole brand-new kitchen as well, too, the high school. You know, that's relatively a, a new kitchen in school standards, you know, being out there for about 20 years now. Middle school, junior high, junior high was revamped through that previous bond initiative. So we're sitting pretty good, and we've kind of been able to take care of ourselves to make sure we've put ourselves in a position. So when we start seeing this decrease in revenue, it's not going to affect us as dramatically.
So in a nutshell, you're saying Krispy Kreme's for everybody?
If they start making them again.
Yes. No, very good. Thanks.
I'm sorry. I thought it was also, yeah, but you did want to address the after-school part.
Josh, sorry. I have a question that is not about nutrition information, but it's still your department. I've had several different parents come to me about Elmer Schrader, the wiring in the teacher's workroom that the kids walk through, that this exposed wiring that they've done. Is that going to be covered?
I would have to look into what you're telling me, because.
They're saying when you walk into the teacher's workroom, that you walk through that room to go into like, some of the different rooms that the kids work in, one-on-one, and are in small groups, that there's wiring there that they redid over the summer and it's exposed, where the kids could just reach in and grab it. Now, it's not electrical wiring, it's internet-type wiring, but I've had several people ask me about that and if that's going to be covered.
I will have to look into that and get back to you if it's. Yeah.
If it's technology, I can get with Mr. Hall.
Okay.
You said Elmer Schrader?
It is at Elmer Schrader, yes.
Thank you. If nothing further, then we'll move on to board reports. Do we have an MSBA delegates' report?
Yeah, just sent you guys out the CSIP training. If you didn't get a chance to go through it, it was really good and informative, just kind of education on how that whole process works. And then the state meeting is coming up in, what, a month-ish? So you can get the app, you can kind of look through the sessions that are going to be offered, start thinking about what you want to go see and learn and those kind of things. So those would be the two big pieces that are going on right there.
Thank you.
There's a really good speaker that's going to be in the conference this year.
Yeah, it looks like a really good.
Mothers, one of the students from Sandy Hook is going to speak about school safety. And then I think Jackie Tronker-Curse is going to speak as well.
Awesome. Next, do we have a legislative report?
I scoured the email legislative voice with a grand plan of giving you a giant proclamation of what's happening. I found nothing that I found worthy of sharing with the group, to my great dismay. Next month, I'm hoping to get better material. I need better material.
If you have nothing to report, that's a good thing.
I know.
Yeah.
I feel like I want to, I'm dying to report something.
It's okay, we'll forgive you.
If you have to report, get some more legislation in pass through.
All right, thanks. Next, do we have a foundation report?
I really don't have too much to report this month. Tiger Spirit Week went great. We had over 200 students participate in Putt-Put Golf Day. Movie night, I learned something. We won't be doing that on the first day of school, but we had some good. We had a great sponsor. We had some good kids showing up and watching the movie. However, I'll, I'll do that on, probably on a Friday night, the first week of school, looking at in the future. We have the Penguin Party coming up February 11th. That's our largest fundraiser. We have innovative teaching grants that have been received this month, so we'll be awarding those next month. And I'm excited to say we had some really good applications, so looking forward to seeing what gets funded. And anyway, we continue to just support the district. There'll be 32 teachers happy this week. They'll be getting some gift cards and some various things in the, their mailboxes tomorrow, or sometime before Friday. So I've got those together, and I'll be getting the email out, sent out to them, and thanking them for all they do. So anyway, thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. Next.
Coach Morris, did you have a report to make?
Yes.
Please.
First, Dr. Glass told some of my thunder earlier.
Very good.
I will encourage you to get out and watch the Tigers play tomorrow. Our soccer team does a great job of 12-1 ones and farces. I'm really excited about that. Our fall season is pretty much, the high school's pretty much halfway through for most of our sports. Some of our, I know it goes, it goes fast, tennis, softball, softball, and golf will be our first sports to compete in their respective district tournaments in the next few weeks. Our competition cheer team will also be.
Our competition cheer team will also be in the regional competition this weekend. At the junior high level, softball's wrapped up, and cross-country and football have about three weeks left. Girls' basketball's had their tryouts and have begun practicing. We're also hosting our district soccer tournament this, this year. That'll be right at the end of Nov, of October, and then into the first week in November, so we'll be looking for brackets for that. As far as our elementary and middle schools, as you may have seen in the, in the newspaper and great article by our esteemed guest here tonight, he did a great job of covering our golf at Franklin. We got our snag golf sets in a couple of weeks ago. We got those distributed out. Franklin was the first place, Haley Rush, our, our P.E. teacher there, was really excited about it, wanted to be the, kind of the guinea pig to, to start them off. She's, she did a great job with the, with showing the kids how to use those, and, and they'll be using those for the next couple of weeks. And then we'll, we've got two more sets that are in my office that'll go to the next two elementaries, and we'll spread it out. Middle school has them. They'll start using them in the next, next week or so. Teahouse donated the money, donated money towards the purchase of those, those sets. We kind of worked out a, a deal with Brian at Teahouse of where they would purchase some of those, a part of those sets, and then use them during the summer in their, in some of their programming. So we're hoping to grow, grow the game of golf in Cape as part of our, our program as well. Coach Gibbs and I took football players and cheerleaders to the elementary, middle school, all, all five elementaries, the middle school and junior high, over the course of the last two weeks, to get them fired up about our games, and, and we, we encouraged them to come. I do have to give a shout-out to the Booster Club, our CT Football Moms, and our foundation. Our, our two tailgates were, were highly, there was a big, large participation, as Dr. Glass said, it was awesome. We, we hopefully, we brought more people into the stands, and I know that Paul really worked, in case he worked hard in the concession stand, slinging sodas and popcorn, so, so hopefully that was worth it as well. We will have a fall baseball camp for students from second through second grade. A flyer will be going out to families this week. It'll, it, it'll be at the high school on the turf. It'll be run by our, our baseball staff and players. So we're excited about that for our elementary, middle school, and junior high kids. As far as community, Kate Parks and Rec and I are meeting again either tomorrow or Wednesday. They haven't got back to me on what day to finalize details for our basketball league this winter, as well as our future partnerships this, this spring and summer. Again, our home football tailgates went well, and we appreciate the support there. Somebody have any questions for me?
All good news. Thank you.
It's the first time I've been told I wasn't allowed to know.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we'll need a motion to approve consent agenda items, which include minutes from previous meeting, August 22nd, the payment of bills, and mocad resolution and instrument of adoption. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any questions or discussions about those items? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Those consent agenda items are approved. So next, we have business. The first item is the motion to consider to authorize the superintendent or his desk need to negotiate a contract on behalf of the board with Brockmeyer Construction for the installation of a concrete retaining wall at Jefferson Elementary for a cost of $74,850. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm going to turn it over to Josh Crowe, but it is a very exciting project. We're able to do a lot more with the dollars that we've invested at Jefferson by doing, doing this little, that mission change order.
You should have got the microphone, I guess.
Yeah, over there.
So what? So what we have is an ability, went through a partnership with Parks and Rec Department, to put in a city park on the side of Jefferson. It's in front of you on your board, and that is a rendering of the equipment that's already been ordered. The city has already ordered a dual restroom that will sit on-site. They have already ordered all of this equipment. However, how the lay of the land and the topography of the latias on the upper right-hand side, that back area, needs to be brought up to grade, and so that's why a retaining wall needs to go in. The retaining wall will actually cover three sides of the park. On top of the retaining wall, the, the city Parks and Rec Department will actually construct a black vinyl flat fencing that will keep kids safe, keep the playground, you know, if there's bouncy balls or anything like that. It would be designated for use for the Jefferson School during the day as a playground. Then it would be designated outside of school hours as a city park. We have already looked as well, putting with the bathroom going in, it'll have controlled access. So it can be locked down at night or at dusk. It would follow the same schedule that the city already has. It'd be tied in. We would have lights that operate at night on this. And where you see the darker brown square on the bottom left-hand corner, that is actually where a pavilion is going to be constructed with this as well. So there is a, a dual-room restroom, a pavilion, and then that equipment is going in. And to make it all work, we are wanting to construct that, or have that retaining wall constructed, so that this will just add overall, again, to the entire project we have at Jefferson. So it's pretty exciting when you think about it. Centralized pre-K, new gymnasium, the new auditorium, park, with other partnerships that are going on, and how the parking lot is designed. There, there's going to be a lot of neat things that can be done in this part of our community once this is complete. Questions?
What made Brockmiller reduce their bid from 81,800 to 74,850?
Because they were already on-site. Because they were already on-site.
So we asked them, were we?
When, when we shoot it out, it, you know, it's like, hey, here, bid it, but however, they're already mobilized on-site. They're already there. If they were coming in, they would have to re-mobilize, set up, run everything, and there would be an additional cost for them.
Good question. Any other questions? All right, the motion is to authorize the superintendent or his designate to negotiate a contract on behalf of the board with Brockmeyer Construction for the installation of the concrete retaining wall at Jefferson Elementary for the cost of seventy-four thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed? That motion carries. Last item. We have a motion to consider to approve a career ladder program as allowed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for additional teacher compensation in areas determined by the district to be student-centered enrichment priorities. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'm just excited to be able to offer the career ladder to our teachers. This is an opportunity for them to get a little extra pay for doing a little extra work, and it's been, it's been approved by the state, state-funded, and so this is our plan that we have to submit to the state to get our, our own district plan approved. And basically, this is for help with the intermural programs that Mr. Moyers is running, and also mentorship programs at the secondary level. So the, the advantage of a career ladder plan is that basically the district gets to pick up forty percent of the cost, and the state picks up sixty percent of the cost. Fabulous deal. We're not sure how long it'll be, it'll be funded. That's what happened to the last career ladder plan that happened over, you know, I've never been involved with career ladder plans. Sykesville was the last one that I knew that had a career ladder, but I think it was, it had been funded for twenty-plus years. So we're really excited that they brought this back. Again, funding's always an issue when the money runs out. This is one of the first programs that goes. So we don't want to, we don't want to rely on this money, so to speak, but we do want to, we do want to, to staff the intermural programs this year. That was something that was already in the works, so this makes perfect sense to do that. We're always looking for mentors for our upper levels, and this is ours outside of the regular contracted day. So as you, you probably read in there that there's different stages that you can qualify for. If you've been teaching for two years, stage one, you would qualify for. If you've been teaching for three years, you would be, you would qualify for stage two, and then anything beyond that, you qualify for stage three. So it's fifteen-hundred, three thousand, and five thousand dollars. So a teacher can, can choose, pick and choose kind of where they want to fall. We threw it out to the teachers, said, you know, if the board approves this tonight, would you, would you be willing to sign up and volunteer for this or capitalize on these dollars? And we have, I think, right at a hundred, hundred thousand dollars' worth of stipends to be paid out, and so I don't remember how many teachers exactly that is, but a hundred thousand dollars is the number. So.
Twenty-eight total.
Twenty-eight.
At one oh one hundred and one thousand.
Hundred and one thousand dollars. So excited about it. Hopefully, it lasts a little bit longer. I told some of the teachers that, you know, if it's successful this year, this is kind of our pilot late year, if it's successful this year, we'll go ahead and take it on out and, and look for additional opportunities that, that might be out there. But, so with a hundred thousand dollars, it's going to cost the district forty thousand dollars to be able to offer all these stipends to the teachers. So.
That's a lot of hours.
It is a lot of hours.
Like mentoring, extra time with the kids, too. That's awesome.
So.
These were positions we were arranging for the place, correct?
Yes, well, the mentorship, you know, we're always looking for mentors, so not so much, but the intermurals specifically, but the mentorship is just a bonus. We, you know, the, the intermurals was just really for K through six. We wanted to make sure that we had equal opportunity for, for the secondary teachers, so that's why we opened up the mentorship program.
Makes sense. Cool. Any other questions?
This would be open to, that's fine, to all teachers if they're interested.
Well, they closed at four, because we took, we opened it up for two weeks.
Got you, okay. But I mean, but it was.
It was opened up to all teachers, yeah, all certified teachers.
Got you.
Anything further? All right, the motion is to approve a career ladder program as allowed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for additional teacher compensation in areas determined by the district to be student-centered enrichment priorities. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed? That carries. Anything for the betterment of the board? If not.
Just one quick reminder, we talked a little bit about education and trades and some of those things. There's a really neat program that's going to happen this Saturday. I think it's from eight to two. Michael Keeler is going to lead, he's one of the Dutch Enterprise guys. He's doing a thing at the Osage Center for kids interested in the trades, whether that's HVAC, plumbing, electrical, all kinds of things, that I think many of which are offered as part of CTC, really trying to encourage some local employers to show up and, and teach kids and families who are interested in better understanding what some opportunities outside of further, you know, college education and things like that might look like. So hopefully, that'll be a well-supported program at the Osage Center on Saturday.
Awesome, thanks, thank you. Anything else?
I just want to say it's really been awesome to hear, like, all of the positive feedback about our athletes, our coaches, and we've been getting a lot of really great feedback from parents as well, so that's kind of been exciting.
Yes.
The beginning of the school to get all that positive feedback.
Yeah, I agree, thanks. Is that it? If so, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? All right. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.